Redistricting resolution that you guys presented, only because it doesn't come a full slate listed on it. The code requires the board to certify a complete commission. And it was not complete because it was a five-member board and you guys only presented board names. So whatever you guys choose to do after this is up to you guys. If you guys have any procedural questions though about the requirements, please consider taking a recess because this is needs to be certified by May 15th. So we are on a tight line, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions of more than?
All right.
We have the Democrat name?
Did we get those?
Yeah, we got the two Democratic names. I assume, I guess what, first thing we need to do is rescind that. But do I have a motion to rescind the 24-2021?
Yeah, I make a motion to rescind it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong to rescind 24-2021 on a procedural issue. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no.
I'm just gonna say I'll make a motion to nominate. At this time, I'd like to nominate the two from the Democratic side, confirm them. And then also I'd like to nominate Janine Loiedal, Janet Allenbaugh, and Beth Ann Tillman to the redistricting commission. Oh, okay, and what are the other two names?
It is.
I don't have them.
Ms. Jago, and her first name escapes me.
Oh, sorry.
And then Chris Adcock. I'm sorry.
Chris, Chris Adcock and Denise Jago.
Denise.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to.
What was her last name?
Denise Jago, J-A-G-O.
Yeah.
And then Chris Adcock.
Chris Adcock. Okay, that's a motion I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, haven't just.
Okay.
We've just changed it. I will not vote for that. As I said the other night, we had Republican chair come make some nominations.
The vice chair, right?
Vice chair, yes, come on behalf of the Republican Central Committee. And I have only vote as we're taking the Democrats chair, which I guess Chris Adcock.
Yes.
As we take herself and her nomination. As a member of the majority party on this board, I.
You will.
I will vote no.
Okay.
Based on that. And as I read the code, as was pointed out the other night, I don't believe. Mr. Chuck would be allowed to vote unless we made a standstill again.
Well, that would be true if I was still no party. I am now registered as a Republican and I will vote.
So what was your reason to register?
Well, I'd like to, may I go into that? May I go into that? Two, several things were said, good discussion the other night. Mr. Johnson, the vice chair of the Republican Central Committee presented us with five names. And during the course of discussion on two occasions, you stated you would vote for nobody but off that five-name list. That concerned me and I thought a lot about that. I went home and I reviewed the code. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate he brought to the attention that as a not no party, I could no longer vote. I couldn't, that's correct. Procedurally, we had it wrong and that's my bad as a no party. I should have been the one instead of the Democratic Party to nominate the two extras. Because I would have been the minority party's no party. However, what concerned me was a comment twice about I will vote for nobody else, so.
I took the suggestion, just like we took the suggestion of the Democrat chair. I mean, I told them, did we question their suggestions?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Not at all.
But I want to go back. We've been asked to be transparent and today I'm gonna be brutally transparent about what I believe is going on. Okay? Mr. Johnson, who is the vice chair of the Republican Party. This is a snippet from Facebook on Judy Clark's page back after the election. And I'm gonna read it for those of you who can't, can't see it at home. And I've shared my screen, is everybody able to see that?
It's not.
No, it's not. Let me share my screen. And I'm gonna talk about why this is so concerning. Share screen. Well, technically challenged. It must be since CDC say we can take our mask off, must be a double chin syndrome here. I apologize to the two chins. All right. Yeah, oh, yes, that's one. Yeah, that's one. Okay, thank you. Lori Johnson, whoever she is on Judy Clark's page says, when is Allen's term up? Chuck just got voted back in, correct? Lauren Johnson responded, Lori Johnson, we need to find someone to run against Allen in the Shenandoah area. Now, keep in mind, Allen is a faithful Republican, has been a Republican for years and won on the Republican Party ticket in 2018 after being appointed. There's another comment, somebody chimed in, amen, Lauren Johnson basically saying we need to get rid of Allen. Now, Lauren Johnson says, Al is up in 2022 and yes, we missed the opportunity to replace Chuck. However, now is the time to get someone started to primary out Allen. So there's the leadership of the Republican Party. And when I look at those names, let me finish, please. When I look at those names, every one of those people is either very actively involved in anti-wind or pissed off about us not allowing the Trump rally to occur on the courthouse square. Or they're mad because they lost the write-in election. I don't know, I'm not gonna conjecture on that. But I was reading my oath that I took, you took. I cannot trust those names because the, the chair, vice chair of the Republican Party has publicly stated, and I have other examples that I could show you, but I'm not gonna bore you today. It's abundantly clear what the goal is. It's to remove either me or Allen. Now, what happens in this redistricting committee? They are able to redraw lines and split the district and create a special election. Listen, let me finish, please. Now, when the lines are drawn, the population becomes aware. If the population is shifted and the districts need to change and it splits the districts, creating a special election, I am fine with that. But I am not fine with a preordained committee that has that as their outcome goal. And as I read my oath that we all took, I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of this office. Again, faithfully and impartially. And there's nothing impartial about any of that. So I reject, now Beth Ann, that was a name? That's a compromise. I'm willing to compromise on Beth Ann. I would, I would vote for Beth Ann even though she's on that list. But to me, it's time to call it out and get this. The anti-wind people are driving this and they have been for over a year. I was talking to Public Health today to confirm. Public Health since 2020, the world global pandemic has had wind, anti-wind people at their table six times. Since March 2020, they have met seven times.
Is that a problem?
That is a problem because the board of Public Health has told them on all occasions, we find no medical evidence to support any of your claims. I'm gonna finish, please.
Yeah, go ahead. When you're done, I'd like to know.
That's quite fine. So anyway, my, my, my point here is that the anti-wind people, that's fine. You're anti-wind, that's, that's great. You're entitled to that, but please, 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 quit trying to disrupt the business of the Page County Board of Supervisors. Here it is, fifth month of the year, we've got very little done. Because we keep putting out these anti-wind fires. And now this attempt to redistrict, use this as a tool to get rid of Allen, as has been publicly stated by the leadership of the Republican Party, is ludicrous.
Now, I'm gonna have to stop the event.
No, you're not, no, stop. I've got the floor right now, Jacob.
But you can give me a chance to.
I will give you a chance to reply. Okay, I will give you a chance.
All right.
But it's time for the nonsense to stop. Time for the nonsense to stop. We did not allow a Trump rally out here because we denied the Democratic candidate a rally. And this board has never let anybody do, yes, political parties have come in here to run their caucuses. People are mad about that. I get that, that's fine, you can be mad. But we did that fairly and impartially. Just as we are hoping, the code, if you read the code of Iowa on redistricting, the whole goal is to be impartial. There's nothing impartial about what that list was presented. And so, thank you for listening.
Okay, step one, are you impartial on wind? This has nothing to do with wind. Are you impartial on wind, Chuck?
That's not, absolutely I.
You are. Well, you see, we have on our county website right now a pro-wind infomercial and nothing else. That you host. That's all we have. Is that impartial? Yes or no? Is Page County.
It's factual, it's factual.
Okay. Is there, is there other opinions on those?
I'm not gonna get into this discussion. It's not about wind, it's not about wind.
I don't wanna make it about wind, you made it about wind. I didn't bring up wind.
You, you're bringing, this, this is, I guess.
I'm bringing up, I'm going.
Let's let wind get out of this, Jacob.
I agree. I didn't bring up wind.
Let's just, okay, end it. You can end it now.
Okay. I have to address.
Let's end the wind discussion.
A lot of this seems like it was staffed with me and I have to address some of it.
No, Jacob, it's not. It's not addressing you. It's about being impartial and finding a, a group of people who will go in and take a look at the population data.
I have been told nothing but this, this committee doesn't really matter that much, is what I'm told. It isn't that big a deal. I didn't think it was that big a deal. I don't see, it seems like a pretty big deal right now. There's, it's a bigger deal than I realized based on what I'm hearing right now. I was never told this. That list to me, you know what? Everybody has different political thoughts on who they like locally or.
Sure, and it's fine.
And if Lauren Johnson doesn't agree with you and Al on some things, and he doesn't wanna vote for you and Al.
Oh, that's a.
That is provocative as a person.
Yes, I agree.
And there's a lot of.
It's a little disappointing to have a leadership in my party that can't come talk to me about ideals. That's the part that's disappointing, Jacob.
I think there was a huge state, you wanna talk about local politics, whenever our local Republicans endorsed Democrats, the Democrat sign, or independent sign, they're against the Republicans. So it goes both ways. I'm not gonna defend him, that's.
Have you got a friend that's not a Democrat or a Republican?
I have friends that are Democrats and, and Republicans.
Would you ever be nice to them?
I can put him, makes a pretty nice guy here. We've talked a lot, so hear what I'm saying. This is, this sounds just really crazy to me because this is supposed to be not that big a deal.
Judy Clark's, read the code, they can, they can split the districts.
I don't believe those people would do that. I mean, Todd Mayer, do you think he would do that? I don't. I don't believe Beth Ann, I don't believe Judy Clark would.
I have doubts about the list and, and not to question their integrity, but.
You have just questioned their integrity pretty majorly.
I questioned the integrity of the Republican Party to put together that list.
An auditor, a 22-decade-plus-term auditor, has to understand the way redistricting works. And I don't think would do something underhanded at all. I would never assume that or think that whatsoever. Nobody asked you to leave the Republican Party. Nobody told you you should. You did that on your own, of your own free will. A letter here I can read of what you said and then this proves that if, if there's somebody trying to, trying to maybe take control of this redistricting committee for some strategic reason, I would say it's the ones looking the other way right now. As you've just changed your party back to take control over who's on the redistricting. I don't have anything against those other names, I don't know.
Good, that's good.
But, but we have not.
Two great people.
Yes, I'm not questioning that because I don't know them and I have no reason to think they aren't. But as concerned as you're acting, this is very strange to me.
Which is strange, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. It's strange you saying you wouldn't vote for anybody outside that list.
Because they were brought by the Republican Central Committee and it's this, you've got two parties represented here. You've got the Democrats who don't even hold a seat in Page County government that I know of and we're giving them two seats to table because the minority, according to the code, has a right to have a seat at the table.
But which way is it, it's not important, it doesn't matter, right? You just said, so which way is it, does it matter or not?
I think it does matter and the code has to apply, even though our county is mostly Republican, the code has to apply to all counties. And so we abide by the code. The code gives the Democrats two seats to table. Even though they probably by percentage-wise would have nowhere near enough people in Page County to give them two seats to table. But that's fine. The code applies to all 99 counties. And I'm, and I did not, I don't agree with probably the Democrat leadership on very many. But I'm, I'm okay with Chris Adcock putting herself and whoever she wishes on there. The same as I'm okay with the Republican Party, whether you like them or not anymore, Chuck. I'm okay with them doing it because they've earned it according to the code. And I, as a Republican, am going to go along with that. And these are five people, not one or two or three, we can have five or more voices of favor. They would have to have three of them compromise their integrity to do something that was underhanded. And I don't believe that's gonna happen. I believe we have worked pretty hard in Page County to find, to find three people that would do that. And so I totally disagree with this. If you don't wanna be a Republican, that is fine. I have no problem with that. But running on a Republican ticket and then three months later leaving the Republican Party, that right there, that says something to the voters.
Well, let me, let me address.
And you can do it.
Can I say something since my integrity is being questioned? This is Judy.
It's not an open forum right now.
Thank you. But so that is my issue. I have no trouble with you being independent, Beth Ann, no trouble, she's on there. I do not have a problem with that. And you, this whole issue here, I don't, the Democrats are gonna have a seat at the table. Three Republicans should have a seat at table or whoever the Republicans want. I think there's your pretty big olive branch. One of them is registered no party. I mean, they're, this does not look like a hostile takeover to me or some corrupt, corrupted thing that you insinuated. And I take that as offensive as somebody who's just from Page County, that you even would insinuate that.
Well, I've got one.
And I won't tolerate it.
Okay, well, I won't tolerate this in. Let's, there's one other exhibit that, you know, when we came to the table and we had clear differences on, just to say it, wind, clear differences on wind. You and I and Allen all said we are gonna work together. You say we're gonna work together. Few short weeks after that, the first of a series of these messages came into my message box. And I'm gonna ask you if this is your way of working together. I was just in Napa in Clarendon, Jacob Holmes was there talking about Allen, you and a greater driver using derogatory statements about each one. He said Allen stutters and repeats himself, but he would get that fixed.
I've never.
He said you're in cahoots with KMA. And he said a greater driver was in a driveway in his, on his phone on what I would assume would have been the driver break. I don't think that Mr. Holmes needs to discuss any of those things in public. I expect more from our public servants. Thank you and keep up the good work. Now, maybe you didn't say it.
I can respond to that.
Why would a random guy send me that? And I've got other examples that I didn't say because they had expletives in them from other people.
I was, okay.
So how do you explain that is a desire to work together, Jacob?
Okay.
I want, you ask transparency for us as a group.
Yeah, we could be as transparent as you want. I could read and print off and conversations that are unbelievable. I would like to know right now how in God's green earth we came in here without talking. And Allen made a motion to do all this, all, to change all this. And you have this trial basically prepared. That's strange to me that that happened.
Those names, those names were the ones.
That were already there for this whole thing. And KMA, let's, let's read on KMA like this wasn't cook, a cookbook's here. Chuck says yesterday on his KMA interview here, I thought I'd print this in case this kind of thing might happen.
Okay.
In case, intentionally going to the meeting, the auditor had the prepared resolution with three names. Our board decided to make it a five-member board, we're certain of our rights, it can be three, five, or seven. So anyway, we made a five-member board with three performance board and, and the other two by the Democrat Party. We signed a resolution to approve it. However, we only have one Democrat name, legal counsel that we, legal counsel that we retained through Isaac and through Alex Cooney allowed us an improper resolution. We need to rescind that and get it right. That's all we're doing here. Well, we're changing a lot of things.
Yeah, we are changing.
And as far as, you're saying, I said that Allen stutters, I've never said that. And I'm gonna get that fixed, I'm gonna fix you stuttering, how in the world would I get that fixed? I've never said that.
Maybe by removing him, by having him off the board.
Oh.
That's what I would remove to it.
Now, I will say this, I will say this. I have had, I did have a conversation and have said more than once, there was a greater operator across from my driveway, spending time there on break. I had to leave. I called a neighbor to say, just make sure they're not there over an hour. I don't know, he's right across from my driveway. I just, is that something wrong to say? Is that, should that be?
I, I don't know, I wasn't there.
And you know what? And I can, I can also, see, I've, I could pull up endless things that have came from the other end. We're all, we don't all agree. People on boards never all agree.
No.
I agree with the two of you on several things. I do not agree with property rights and wind terms, I do not. We see that differently. That doesn't mean, and, and I do, and I'll say this, that's the most imminent threat to property rights in Page County for the next 50 years, the way we have it written. And I've been clear on that. And you know what? Based on that alone, friend or not, on a board, if you guys can't see that, I would be, I, I am not in support of that. I, I, somebody who sees it the way I see it, I do believe I would support, based on property rights. Period. But it isn't that I don't like you or wanna be friends with you, I disagree with your interpretation of the ordinance, how you wanna do it. This, this deal right here is, this is, this reminds me somewhat of junior high in a way.
I feel like we're going like a pinball machine all over creation. Do you have any?
Well, I think a lot of.
You want me to bring up Facebook? I could bring up some Facebook stuff. I've read your interactions with people, we could read that for a while.
I wish you would, because you would find them. I wish you would, you would find them professional, I think. I really do. I challenge you to find something that's derogatory about a colleague.
I've been derogatory. Have I been derogatory on this board? Or you can write anything, I've been derogatory. Do you have anything?
This gentleman, this gentleman and others have said.
We can argue about here, say, all day long.
Yeah.
And let's just, I think we need a point of order here, I think we need to have a vote.
Okay, I agree. I just, Jacob, I thought it was important, this is kind of more I thought about this after Tuesday night. And I, I take some responsibility. I screwed up too. I didn't real, I didn't, procedurally, we were wrong on two counts. As a no party at that point, I should have picked two people, not the Democratic Party, the way the code was interpreted from the second term of state. But that being said, if I may, I'd like to address this party change. Because you're gonna, you're gonna take that and people are gonna be mad and people are gonna take me task, and that's fine. They can, but let me say this. All that 90 days of my adult registered life, I've been Republican. I'm still a Republican. I'm conservative. The reason why, as stated to the Republican Central Committee in my email, was the leadership in our county is changing and they are very radically right. And I am not a radically right Republican. Now, perhaps it was air, I've had people say, you know, instead of leaving, maybe you should have tried to fix it. But out of that group, I'm getting dodged by most of them on this anti-wind issue, on the annex issue, on virtually everything that this board has done. And why do I wanna try to change that? So that's why I quit the Republican Party. But I'm a Republican, I have been my whole life. I believe in conservative values and fiscal responsibility, in birth rights, gun, or right to, right to be born. I believe in gun rights. I mean, I'm Republican, but I'm not a radically right Republican who blindly gonna follow somebody who has.
What does radical mean?
Radical means people who.
Cause you're serving abortion and money and I don't know what else there is. I mean, right.
Well, radical is what? Radical is having an insurrection in the Capitol and then denying that it happened, basically.
So people who are Democrats that have, that break the law and do, and do.
That's not right either, the right.
Well, I'm saying, does that, that mean all Democrats are radical? I mean, you're saying people that would have an insurrection are radical.
Not all Democrats are radical, not all Republicans are. But the two sides both of them are wrong.
A few people at the Capitol has nothing to do with the Republican Party. I mean, that, that makes no sense to me. And you said, right, in my view, the radical right has emerged in the last few years and become as dangerous to democracy as the radical left. It's not the local county party, you said the whole shooting match. This whole thing is, is just squirrely. I.
You know, I just wanna say. I, I put it on the floor, the three people, I, I, I know these three people. I would trust them to make good decisions and work well with everybody. The Janine Loiedal has had a, a history of positives in Page County. Not only in Page County, but the state of Iowa on many different projects. Janine is very well respected. Janet Allenbaugh is probably one of the top leaders in the, on the Shenandoah side of importance in working on the election. She's done that very well, plus I know her, she's somebody that will listen well, look at the data well. Beth Ann, I feel the same way about. I've known and worked with Beth Ann for probably 10 to 12 years on different projects. I will leave those three names on the floor for vote as, as I've read them, so.
Did I understand you say Beth Ann's not a Republican?
I'm not even sure. I thought KMA was, so I was reading the KMA.
She's not, okay.
So anyway, this issue here.
No, she doesn't, no, I'm just saying.
I didn't, I didn't. So here's, on this issue here, as I've been told, this is a big, serious thing. Now, we're worried about everybody, I do not think any of these people would do that. Because the Democrats came forward with their two nominees and that's how we've done this, whether it be no party or not, whatever. And I did not question one of them at all. Him acting, Lauren, acting as the co-chair of the Central Committee, it's not, Lauren Johnson's not the Republican Party. He's the co-chair, he's acting as a representative. Give us a list of names. I'm a Republican, I'm a proud Republican, I'm a conservative. I'm, I'm not worried about wavering from that. And, and some people are wanting to be purple and I, I line up, I'm a platformed Republican Party. I don't have a problem with any, anything in the Republican platform. So, so on that, this is, this is, as we said, I, I, if that's the name they brought us and then we added Todd Mayer to it.
Yeah, at the last, at the last minute.
And that was, that was something they must have had in consideration. I do know him slightly, but I.
I don't, I don't think he had asked Todd yet, but I have, because of.
I don't know that.
That day, he just said, what if I added Todd? And I said, well, I guess, I don't know. I said, but at the time, I thought we were legal, so.
Yeah, and so what I'm saying is, I, they act on their own behalf. I'm sitting here as a Republican and I want to back up the Central Committee, what they wanna do, the Republican Party. So on that alone, I'm not against any of these people that you nominated. I don't have anything against them, but I am gonna vote with what the Republican Party brought me.
That's perfectly okay.
And.
That's fine. We can, we can all vote your.
Yes, I understand that. And so legally, you're a Republican now as of Wednesday. Wednesday, so we have a Wednesday and that's fine. So you're now a Republican.
For the reason of voting on this. And the reason to make a point.
Because you questioned the integrity of the people that were on the Republican.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
I didn't say I questioned. I didn't say I questioned their integrity. I said I questioned the, the end result. I didn't say personally, I, I didn't personally question it. I say that I don't trust that there's not an agenda there. That's what I said. I didn't, I don't.
Somebody that would use an agenda to do something illegal or of some nature, I don't know.
Well, not illegal, because the law allows them to redistrict. But the numbers, and here's, here's the basic difference between you and I. You're, and this is why I left the Republican Party. Is this notion that this is about, I'm gonna support the Republican Party. Where in the world did the thought process go that we want people who are interested in helping local government? What about local good government has anything to do with Page County, Iowa, about being a Republican or a Democrat? We're looking for people to analyze numbers and to make a decision for a 10-year period.
So what? Redistricting, I know it doesn't probably matter in Page County, is political, Chuck. This is not about community service. Yeah, but you, you just made it political. You can't have your cake and eat it too. This is not political.
I didn't make it political, this group made it political by presenting that list.
I call, I call a point of order. Just get a vote. I call, I call point of order, let's get a vote.
Well, I, I want to say one thing, I've been elected, I want to say a little something here. We can't, we can't allow whatever kind of wild thing, and then point of order, we're going to end this thing. I want to too, because it's getting silly. But, but I, I'm going to talk a little bit, because we had no point of order to stop Chuck from talking. So, this is what's happened here, you, you believe there's an agenda to do something to cause you difficulty, and so therefore you are putting people in that I'm not saying are bad, but so how am I to trust that you don't have an agenda? I mean, I, I don't think they are, I don't know, but how do I trust you? You, you've insinuated that this is some wild agenda that that still has to be.
Have we ever shown an agenda to you?
Huh?
Do we ever show an agenda?
I think this meeting right here is the biggest agenda I've ever seen in my time on the Board of Supervisors, but this wasn't the most cooked.
Janet.
Thing I've ever seen, and you know what, I think the people will see it, so that's fine, I work for the people.
We all work for the people, Jacob, I don't.
I know you do, I'm not saying you don't want to work for the people, but this seems cooked, and if you don't, this is, this is the most cooked thing I've ever seen.
Whenever I, whenever we brought up Janet and, um, I just lost, Jean, now this brought up the other night, and yet you.
I, I don't, I just, we had a Republican chair in public comment make a list, can you list?
When those names were presented, they're just two very outstanding.
I don't challenge that, I don't know, I don't have an answer to it.
That's where these names, I mean, the allegation has been cooked, and we've done this, those names were brought up on Tuesday night, as well as Beth Ann's, and when you made the motion, I'm thinking, okay, I'm not, I said, so she's on the list, maybe the Republican Party would be happy, these other two people I think are Republican, I don't know why anybody.
They probably are, I don't definitely, most people are. But I'm not insinuating that there is, it is cooked, I'm just saying, how do I, you're, you're throwing it the other way, so it's hard as you're throwing it, and you're willing to, you're willing to back off, change parties in and out, and do, I just, it, it looks to me funny.
Well, again, I, I have a hard time when the gentleman who presented the list makes these statements, and these aren't the only times, I just captured this one.
An individual has a right, have political thoughts.
He certainly does have a right, but when he takes a leadership role in a party, he has also a responsibility to represent his entire party and not his personal views. These are his personal views. So how do I know that his personal views didn't bring that list together? I can only assume that it did.
Well, everyone has, I don't know whose personal views and moral compass doesn't guide them in every decision they make, you can't separate that, and he's, if he doesn't politically agree with you, that is his right.
Absolutely.
The Republican Party also properly has a little bit of a, uh, grift with you over the way you lumped everybody together in your letter of resignation, calling them all radical without a definition of radical, so.
I did, you can read the, please post the letter, I didn't call everybody radical, that's not true. It said, there's a radical element in the Republican Party, as I recall, I don't have it in front of me, but I didn't call Republicans radical, I do think that the, uh, Page County Republican Party's current leadership leans very much farther to the right than I do as a moderate Republican.
Well, and I, I, I am a right, leaning right, and all of my life as a Republican means in, in abortion, it means in money, moderate is where you lose abortion and, and all the Christian right, see, I don't even think you even know what you're saying. So, if you're, if you're a moderate, you drop off that stuff, but whatever, you can, you can define it however you want, the far right is your strong, conservative, money, fiscal, uh, you know, for, for all the moral issues, that all goes far right, I don't know where you're going with this, and there I stand, so, and, and not, not crazy people going into a Capitol throwing things, no, no, I don't think anyone in Page County goes along with that, so, as Republicans.
I'm not so sure.
Well, it'd be very few, and I wouldn't want to pick that low of the people, especially our elected Republicans, and anybody, no, no way.
Hopefully not.
So, this whole thing, so on this, and as funny as this looks, as cooked as this whole thing looks to me, and the way it all came about and it's all predone, this wasn't a surprise.
It's okay, you, you were, you were convinced that we've done all kinds of things before you were even running for office, so it's okay to share that with us, but that is getting us past that, oh, I can, I think there were some meetings way back when you came in, you accused us of having secret meetings and blah, blah, and all that, you know, that's perfectly okay.
Well, the one time I remember saying that, I left a meeting, and I came back to the next meeting, and something had totally changed with no discussion, and you're not, we're not supposed to be talking, or you're going to sue, and that's why I said, what happened, how did this change?
I'd have to go back and read.
And that's the only time I've said that, and I asked a question based on two meetings back to back with no meetings between, and it was saying, explain it, I don't understand.
Well done.
And that is a very simple thing to ask, it's not a, you know, when you're at a public meeting, it ends, and it's adjourned, and you come to the next one, and there's a total black and white difference, it's a reason for question, and I said, if nothing else, remember at the time, it doesn't look good. Uh, so, I've tried to be very careful not to.